The meeting's called Order. This will stay up for five, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you read the statement, the certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Please go along.
Chairman Venero.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mayor Malham is not present. Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bold.
Here.
Mr. Craviano.
Here.
Ms. Guaman is not present. Ms. Novorato.
Here.
Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Ms. Nettleford is not present. Mr. Dian.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo. Mr. Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Sorial filling in for Ms. Tavito.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for the approval in a minute of the Thursday, November 10th, 2021 meeting?
Some more.
Make a motion. Second?
Please go along.
Chairman Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bold.
Yes.
Mr. Craviano.
Yes.
Ms. Novorato.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Take note, Paul.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, if I could, before we get on with the, uh... Before we get on with the, uh... With the rest of the meeting, there's a little something I'd like to present to the board. So at our last meeting, we had kind of a raucous meeting at some point. And someone asked a question, who's in charge of the planning board? Kind of stuck in my head. So, when I was... Went home, started looking at the membership of the planning board on the top of the, uh... Agendas. And the first thing that hit me, that made me start to, you know, wonder, was I saw that Mr. Guyan, who was here before Mrs. Nettleford, remained in the second position when he should have been moved up to the first position. So that got me thinking. So, I got some facts and figures together. This is what I found out, and this is why I want to present it to the board, because it's quite serious. In, let's see here, I'm gonna get my papers. In 1978, there was an ordinance passed, number 2022. And it set the, uh... Town as a, uh... Where are we going here? One second. We had commissioner form of government. They set it up as a commissioner form of government. And that's the way it ran until 1990, when the then commissioners set up a new form of government. And I'll just read the first, the first chap, uh... Paragraph or two. Whereas the mayor board of commissioners of the town of Bellevue, the county of Essex, New Jersey, causes ordinance of a general and permanent nature to be compiled and revised and embodied in a revision and codified, known as general ordinances, of the town of Bellevue, New Jersey by adopting ordinance dated May 23rd, 77, which was the old ordinance. Whereas on July 1st, 1990, the commissioner form of government ceased to exist and was replaced by the council manager form of government as provided by the optional municipal charter law. And it gives that, that number, that ordinance number. So in 1990, the, the, the town switched over to a council manager form of government. It's pretty clear. I have those two ordinances, and it's pretty clear. It was affirmed by those council members. And that, you know, they, they, they define councils, I mean, the elected council members, including the mayor, deputy mayor of the town of Bellevue. And they also referred to charter, which meant the manager, uh... The manager plan, as they call it, a manager and council. So, I wanted to know how we all were appointed, because people have been coming on the board in a regular form and fashion. I even didn't know when my term was up. So, I made the next step, and I got appointment resolutions. So, I started going through the appointment resolutions. Myself and Brian Banda were appointed by resolution in June by the council as a resolution, the way it's supposed to be under the 1990 ordinance. After that, the mayor chose to start to nominate and place people on this panel via a memo letter that doesn't go before the council. It's not voted on by the council. He appoints them, they don't even know what he's doing. He just does it. And what he chooses to grab as his reason, says pursuant to township of Bellevue ordinance 19-1, when 19-1 is under the establishments of the 1978 ordinance, which was a commission, commission form of government. So he has abandoned the ordinance of council manager established in 1990, which he served under in 2003. They even have a document with him affirming that. And he grabs one line off of an ordinance, you know, off the, of the ordinance in 78, which, again, I can read it again, it ceased to exist, is what they said. So, I continued to search, and I could go through documents here. There were two. It was a 1999 ordinance that affirmed the, uh... Let me, let me just go to it so I can read it to you, so I don't, uh... So I don't misquote anything. The ordinance is right here. So there were two. These are quite interesting, too. So in, in the first one, ordinance number 2812, 1999, we have four classes of membership. Class one, the mayor. He doesn't need to... He appoints himself, right? Class two, municipal official to be appointed by the mayor. That's Ms. Guaman. That's fine. Class three is a member of the council to be appointed by the council. And oddly enough, that's Tommy, and he has been appointed through resolution this whole time. That's the proper way to do it. Class four, eight other citizens of the municipality to be appointed by the council. So aside from myself and Mr. Banda, everybody else has been appointed by a memo, which there's no way you can construe to be legitimate. This is not legitimate. I mean, a, a, a grade school kid could read the documents I have in front of me and see that the 1978 ordinance was cast aside by the 1990 ordinance, which put us into a manager, a council manager form of government. And under that council manager form of government, the council has to approve the members. And they haven't. I believe it to be an illegitimate planning board. How can we continue to vote on things? It, it, it just, it's been done completely out of laws and, and around the ordinances. That 19-1 that he quotes literally comes off a 1978 ordinance that set up that, that, uh... Other form of government. So, that's a big issue I have. And as I look, and I look further, I've been on the board, I think, for almost 10 years. Things have changed in the last few years. They really have. Not always to my liking, but I'm on the board, I'm one of many, and I say it often, it's my opinion. This is my opinion. There's been some conflicts of interest on the board. Clear conflicts of interest. And this really kind of rattled me a little. When I read, you know, the complete guide to New Jersey planning boards and zoning boards, which I'd been given when I joined, it probably never... I should have opened it earlier, maybe. But it didn't. Let me read conflicts of interest. The third paragraph says, however, the courts have narrowly construed conflicts of interest and determined that even if there is no direct interest, the possibility of a psychological effect may be enough to taint a hearing. Thus, if in doubt, the safest course is to consult the board's attorney. If there is a doubt about the propriety of the board member acting on a particular matter, the board member should voluntarily step off the board for that application. The rationale is simple, that the board decision must be free of any bias or any appearance of bias whatsoever. The courts do not hesitate to reverse or remand the decision in which a board member has had some personal or financial interest at stake, regardless of how that member voted. And there clearly have been. I could go into them. There's clearly been some conflicts of interest. Where, I'll give you the greatest example. On 11 Franklin Avenue, the chairman recuses himself because his property adjoins that property. He's within the 200-foot radius. And he goes and he sits in the back row. The mayor has voted on things, on, on proposals and projects that are before us, and he's taken campaign money from these people and from their associates. That is such a clear and direct violation of conflict of interest that when you combine these two items, I personally believe that this board should suspend all operations until the, the, the DCA or somebody can guide us as to how we're supposed to proceed. I'm not, nothing against any of the board members. You know? Right? Mr. Bo, Patricia, anybody. We, we were, if I only happened to be named in the proper way because it was when the mayor first got in, and I guess he hadn't conceived this play yet, where he was going to circumvent the council and just appoint members. He says that's his, uh, his right and his duty. No, it's not. Anybody that wants to look it up, 19-1 out of the establishments of that 78 ordinance, say that. Yes. But that's not the form of government we're operating under. So it's a complete violation. And not only violation, it's against the law. It's illegal. It's illegal. Even with some of the conflicts of him sitting on the board with people who have donated to his campaign. It's legal to donate. They can donate, nobody's complaining about that. It's illegal for him to sit up here. And I wish he were here tonight, because I would love to hear his response. It's illegal for him to sit up here and question the applicant and vote on the applicant. We had Mr. Dorsel here last month with some crazy building he wants to build. Mr. Dorsel's, uh... Some of his employees and some people associated with him have donated to the mayor. The mayor should recuse himself, he never should have sat up here. So, these things are illegal. And what I'm going to do is take this package and, and hand it off to somebody at DCA who oversees this, because we don't have council here tonight. Her dad had an emergency. I wish the mayor were here, because I'd love to question him. Well, we do have council here, but he's not familiar with what's going on on this board. I, I, my, my apologies. He, he's not, and I don't think he wants to throw himself in the middle of it either. We had, out of nowhere, we've been asked to review bills. This is what this raucous meeting was about last time. The, the, the mayor and the town manager have decided that we all should approve the professionals' bills. We don't have enough information to review the professionals. But again, we're not accusing the professionals of not, uh, doing the right thing, but we never did it before. And yet, they, they want us to do it now, and they have ulterior reasons. You know? So, that aside, these two items are illegal. That item of him wanting us to review the bill isn't illegal, I guess, that we could do it or not do it. These two items are of a serious nature, and they're designed this way so that the... This is a non-political board. It's autonomous from the board. When I asked who put Mrs. Nettleford before Mr. Guyan's, I was told the mayor. He has no right to do that. Mr. Venero's the chairman. Since when do we hop over people without cause? So, I would like to hear from the public, some of which are very astute. And then I would ask, Mr. Venero, I don't see how we move forward on any vote, because any vote we make is illegitimate and can be reversed and remanded by a court or even the powers-to-be, DCA. We don't know what they're going to do. So, that's what I found out, because a question was asked, who runs the board? You know what my final answer is, who runs the board? Who's got the most votes? And so that's why, and I said it to Mr. Banda a few weeks ago, this board has been stacked by the mayor illegally. Not, uh, you know, uh... How can I say, uh... I, I don't want to use the wrong word, but it really is, it's, it's illegal. It breaks all these ordinances, some of which, I believe if I read this book right, carry 500, uh... 500 other fines and 90-day prison sentences. Per occurrence. I don't know how many hundreds of times that is, every time we sat here. Every time he sat with a conflict. He's, he's made a mess of his board. Because all the years I sat on it, it was never politicized. We never heard from the mayor or any councilman to do something. It was never arm-twisting. We heard an application here last week that had 20-something variances on a 45-foot-tall building, and were people contorting themselves to try to figure out how could we pass it? Pass it? Pass it? You know, that, that's what, I don't want to sit on a board that's been politicized, and I'm not going to affirm any more votes that don't sit well to my conscience. We changed the zoning law because we were told we needed to get a little more generous to get things started. We're going on about 1,400 units right now, and there's no... They haven't rescinded any of those zoning changes. We're doubling down on some. There's conflicts coming up in the zoning changes. There's major conflicts coming up with the zoning changes. I see no action for the mayor to recuse himself. So, until some of this stuff is straightened up, I'll sit here. I will take no part. I will say my piece. And what I suggest we do is suspend our actions, go to the proper authorities at the state level and have them figure out what we should do to put some integrity back into this board. Because I may disagree with some of the people that get up and speak, and I see your faces, you're here all the time, and I always say, "God bless you," because you guys care. I may disagree with you, but I respect you. And it's disrespectful, not only to talk rudely, as I've seen it done before, and others did it before, you know, other council members in the past. I don't appreciate that. But that, that's, that's what I've discovered. That's my discovery. I got a package of it, I have all the documentation. It is going down to Trenton, and that's my suggestion. And I hand it back over to the chairman.
I just wanted to, um... I respect what you're, you're saying. I just want to add my little two cents for being here. I've been sitting on this board for 20-plus years. Been great, you're the next, uh... Longest-serving member. We used to have bills sent to us all the time.
Basic, basic bills, right.
Yes, we were always approving bills. It stopped. Why it stopped, I don't know. I was the chairman at the time. I never was able to ask that question of why it stopped, but it did. I was glad to see it come back. That's my personal opinion. I don't know what happened at the last meeting. Unfortunately... Which I do apologize for, because I got a text, I thought it was a Thursday, and I get the message on my phone, it's 8 o'clock. I don't know why it came up at 8. Then, anyway, make the long story short. I do agree on a certain thing. I think our attorney needs to be a little more vocal. We pay for this attorney and don't quite get our money's worth. I, I said that a couple of times, because there's lateness. We don't get a complete, uh, time to ask questions with our... I have a problem with that, I've been having a problem with that. Uh, our old attorney was always there for any kind of questions that we had in case of conflicts. We don't have that now. That's something else, maybe, we could think about as a board, since we're the ones that hired the attorney. I just want to let the public know my thought. I don't know about any other members.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear from, from all members. Mr. Conti brought up some serious allegations. As chairman, I like to make my decisions based on what's, what's right. So I would like to hear from members, first of the board, feelings they have, and then I'd even like to hear from the public, maybe something they would like to input, so we could have a educated decision on how we move forward.
Yeah, I just, I just like to go on record with the number of units that are going up. Prior, uh, we were handed, I believe, 500 or 600 already in the hopper, right, before we got before up here. So, we, this city, as long as Thomas sat up here, did not do 1,400. Prior, you all, whoever was up here, took 500 or 600 on yourself. So, 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 so let's not, so, so let's not say, well, 1,400.
First of all, let me say, that's, that's not what, that's not what this is about, the number of units. Number one. Number two, the mayor takes credit for every unit. So if he were here, and I wish he were, he might disagree with me. Because according to him, everything that happened, happened on his watch.
But that's okay, I'm not, I'm not here, I'm, I'm talking about Tommy.
But the real thing that's at question isn't the number of units.
Well, you mentioned it, so I just wanted to be clear.
Let me say why it is almost about the number of units. Because I think it's bad planning, what we're doing. And if the board is, is rigged against clear thinking, because it's become political and it's what the mayor wants, then it's going to happen regardless of what we say. And it'll go to the council, and it'll, regardless, up there, he has control, and it'll happen regardless of what we say. So, I could sit here and say something, again, only my opinion, not every decision should be based on what I believe, by all, by all means. But we are up to about 1,400 units, and when are we going to put the brakes on it?
But, but, but my opinion, my...
Again, this debate isn't about the units. This debate, this debate is about the way this board is placed and the conflict of interest that, that consistently go on here.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Andy.
It's outside what's getting done, I think it's the structure and how...
The structure.
No, no, I got that, but I just, I, I got that, but I just want, but I just want to say, prior, there was 500 or 600 already approved. So, I, I, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying how, what...
And I don't disagree with you.
Okay, that's all.
I don't agree with you. And I'm for, as a matter of fact, when the mayor was, uh... Before he, he became the mayor, he sat in the back when we heard Belmont Avenue. And I have a letter from him thanking me for, you know... I know some of the people didn't want it. I thought it was a little too big, and I'm probably on record for saying it. But that's the project we had. And I said, you know what, I'd rather see that project than not. I know there's people disagree with me. We respect each other, I say that to them. But I didn't think the whole town was just going to become 250-unit apartment buildings. We have no idea about what the impact is going to be on our town. They're not occupied yet. We have a great chance they become hubs of, of Section 8. Oh, no, they can't. Oh, yes, they can, especially with our federal government just being happy to do all that money. So you don't know, and I don't know what's going to happen. So instead of us slowing things down a little, we're putting our foot on the... We're looking to put 80 units here and 200 units there. Let's take out that gas station, we could put 75 units there. There's people coming in, Union Avenue, 50 units, 40... This is what the town needs? That's what we need? I live in a house here, and you're going to put a three-story building next to me? That's what you think the town needs? Because I don't think that's what the town needs. And then, there's no parking. So I think the planning is there. But I can't have an impact if the other side is rigged against it, because this is the mayor's vision. This is the mayor's vision.
I'm not saying that, although I just want to go on record and say, prior, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
And so my thing is, by looking into that, seeing how the board, as I said, that Brian is rigged, I started to do my homework and find it's rigged because he illegally appointed it. It's illegally appointed, not unjustly, illegally. He's breaking laws by doing what he's doing. And if Martino wants to approve it, whatever. He, that, could he sit here and tell me what ordinance he's going by? No. Just like when we argued last week about Frank, they could not cite the, how an ordinance doesn't trump a resolution. When we asked that question, we got silence. These are simple matters, they're not complicated. They're not complicated, because once you take over the board, there's only one more guy in the way. His name is Frankie Lorenzo. Get him out of the way, you can do whatever you want over here. And that's what's happening. And, and I, 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 I don't, I said to Ray many years ago, I'm not going to sit on a board and be the puppet for something that's completely lax in temperament. And I don't think any of us want to do that. I really don't. I really mean that. I, I, I respect the board members. But you have to be honest about some of the things that are occurring here. I mean, this board is illegally appointed. I would go home and do your homework and tell me otherwise. Mr. Martino's going to tell me otherwise. All right, show me the ordinance. Clearly, Tom, there's no doubt. I didn't have time, I want to make a package and give it to everybody, because I didn't have time to do it. It's A, D, C's. Same thing with Frank. If you can't do a payroll on a resolution, and Michael's saying you can, but the law clearly states you can't, you're operating outside the law. And then you bring it to us because you want us to start approving bills? I don't know what bills you approved back then. I just told you...
They were basic, they were basic, though.
They were about how much a pencil cost. Now you want me to approve CME for $48,000? What do I know what CME did in the town for 48? Maybe they're legit 100%. I can tell you one thing, CME gave about $5,000 to the mayor. Okay? And again, that might be legal, but it makes you scratch your head a little bit, you know? I'm not, my mama didn't raise me to be anybody's fool. And I'm not going to sit here and pretend it's not going on. And I really wish the mayor were here tonight, because I would love to hear his answers. Legally, I don't think he has any. We're going to find out. Because this paperwork is going to the state, from my hands to the state, and let them decide. I think we should suspend this board, because it's that corrupting. That's my opinion.
Any other, Brian, would you like to...
Well, I, I understand your concern, Andy. I understand everything that's been going on, last meeting, this meeting, and all the times it led up to that. I, I think there's stuff in the background that's going on, that needs to go on, that, like you said, you were going to send paperwork down. They sent paperwork down. Frankie's sent his, you know, side down. I think we have to let that play out.
Well, no one clearly says in the book that you're operating illegally.
Well, that's the other piece of it. You said, basically, everyone here except for, I guess...
You and me. And that's it. And not me.
And Tommy's legal.
Yeah, so what are we going to do?
And you said Jackie was legal.
Jackie and the mayor.
So, who is not legal?
Everybody else.
But I was, I was reappointed...
He's on the memo.
I was reappointed last June by, what, he said memo?
Memo.
Which should have been resolution.
But you know what the funniest part is? Why didn't he just do it the right way? The same people are going to go on, because he wants complete control over everything. And that's an issue. And when people act like that in government or on, or on a little league board, which we never did, then you get into trouble. This isn't a dictatorship. He doesn't even have the power to do what he did. He has the power through his attorney, who reaffirms his illegal activity. That's another subject matter. Yeah, people at the state are looking at it.
Yeah, that, that should be able to play out, and let that play out. Whatever they say, we kind of have to go with, right? And that, that'll be the law when it happens. In the meantime, we have people with real interests that are going to be losing a lot of money if we just say, okay, we're not going to do anything. Like the, we're housing people that don't want to come in now.
Listen, we should have their problem, once again.
No, I understand, but it's...
If you want to debate tonight's thing, so we're going to say to... Listen, all, I'm in business for myself my whole life, 40 years. All power to people that are worth $100 million. I have nothing against them, God bless you. They came in, they bought a dirty piece of land, they paid what they paid, with their eyes wide open. We have a five-year, and I said it when it happened, the day that you named this town, you didn't. We voted on this board to eliminate the big developer. But we included them, at the council level, it was included. So the big developer gets an area in need of rehabilitation, and he gets a five-year tax abatement. The first year, he pays zero, then he pays 20% of his bill, 40, 60, 80. By the fifth year, he's paying his bill. So if I could, I have a man in front of me, and I, and Ray said it that night. So, you want to give the homeowner a new roof, you're going to give him a break. Whiptie doo. This guy comes in with 20 million, he buys it. Listen, the state doesn't require much for cleanup, especially if he goes industrial. He caps it. Listen, the state doesn't require much for cleanup, especially if he goes industrial, he caps it, he puts up a facility, and all of a sudden it's got fifty, sixty million dollars. And we're gonna let Tom Banker go and make a deal with him, and we're gonna get what after thirty years? It's all behind closed doors, we don't even know what we're getting.
We're talking about politics again.
But it's not politics, because I don't believe that that land should be an area of redevelopment. He has a five-year tax abatement, and then, here's the best one, the developer on Main Street.
I don't think it... Wasn't a payment given to anybody yet?
No, well, he has one.
The idea of the townwide one was so that the actual residential homeowner can get it and not be roadlocked by, that actually gives something back to the residential homeowner. They still have to go to the bigger guys, still have to go to the council to get theirs, which means if they were gonna go, they were gonna get it anyway.
No, you're wrong, first of all. First of all, they get the five-year deal, it's a big...
They don't get it right out of the gate, it's gotta be voted on by the council. The regular town owner, regular homeowner can go right to the tax office and get it.
Mr. Chairman, I am not sure, but I like council's review. We're talking about applications and we might be crossing a fine line?
Yeah, I think we really shouldn't be discussing it.
I don't think that either.
Listen, that's not the debate here, and I'll say it again, I've gotten sidetracked culture. That is the reason, though, that I looked into this, because we don't have a fair debate here. We have somebody who stacked the board, and I said it a few weeks ago, and I looked into how he stacked the board, and he stacked the board illegally. And then voted on stuff in direct conflict of interest, both of which are illegal and punishable by prison and fines.
I understand your reasoning behind that, but the people who are sitting here were voted on except for, I guess, Ray and Lawrence.
That's what are we gonna do, no, nobody's here except you, me, Tommy, the mayor, and Ms. Wallen.
Were voted on.
That's it. No, you weren't, you were re-nominated on a memo, I have it here.
I understand, you're voting producer.
No, I could produce the memo, trust me, and it's not against you, Frank, I mean it. Mr. Bov, memo, Patty, memo. The only reason I voted memo was because it happened within the first month that he was in office. Then, how did it change? All of a sudden it changed, by the power vested in me, I'm gonna start nominating and the council has no say. And Mr. Martino said, that's right, he said it, I second it, shut up, council members.
Lawrence, did you have something you'd like to say?
Um, just a quick, just a quick thing about what everything is going on. As far as bills, I don't plan on voting for any bills to be paid unless Frank is included in the bills, which is only right, you can't tell me, oh, he's going through something, oh, we're gonna wait for this to be cleaned up, and you expect us to pay everyone else bills. I don't feel comfortable about the bill situation either way, as something like, as Mr. Conti has said, you don't know what you did for forty-three thousand dollars, you know? They're sending us invoices now, and you can look at the invoice, but do we really know what they're doing? I don't, and I don't really feel comfortable about it. As far as Mr. Conti concerns about the board being illegal, I tend to agree with him. You know, and I'm a man of integrity, and if he feels that way, I don't think we should be doing anything until any of this is cleaned up. It's just not right, and it's just not fair to you guys or even the developers, for them to tell us, nope, you can't do that, nope, you can't do this. And talking about waste of money, can you imagine all the developers that we approved, now you have to come back and start all over again? I think it needs to be straightened out before anything gets done.
I think if we all keep playing these games, it's gonna be tax better, and it's not gonna be funny, I have to. If a few pissed off people manage to ever move town.
What are you gonna do with everything we do, everything we prove gets sent back to us? And just say, no, this wasn't right, you can't do this, you know?
I don't know how that works.
I don't know either. That's the problem right there, no one actually knows.
Hey, let's just speak one at a time, so we can have it on record. We had a memo last week that our, tonight we had a hard time keeping up. So we just, clearly and quietly, give your opinions.
Listen, it's not even about the membership, and I hope that the members understand that. But legally, we sit illegitimately. By the law, by the ordinance, by penalty of the ordinance, this board is illegitimate. I even say we can't even vote on something tonight. I don't see how. We're illegitimately placed board, and that's really my final opinion. So I will take no part, and they can do what they want, and then with DCA and the Attorney General's office gets involved, then we'll see what their decision is. But as far as I'm concerned, that's my final opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask council, what would happen if we did nothing until this is situated? Can council tell us, if there's any validation to these claims, what happens? I'd like a legal opinion.
Okay, well, obviously, thank you. Obviously, I'm stepping into this in the first time hearing of this.
But the law's the law.
I can hear you.
I understand, obviously, I'm stepping into this in the first time hearing from you. What the law is and what the law isn't, usually these matters are addressed in advance by providing the board and the government in advance with the statutes and ordinances and resolutions. Now, obviously, I've been sitting here since this came up, and I'm quickly doing as much research as I can, because this is where I've been put now. I'm not so sure that what the gentleman in two seats to my right has been saying is actually well factual or true.
You don't go have the documents, I do.
No, I understand, and I can print old resolutions, I can print old ordinances, new ordinances. There's a gentleman at the end of the table who is suggesting that he's actually been appointed by the council while you're suggesting that it's a resolution. Now, somebody, I mean, you're suggesting that it's a memo now. A mayor could quite possibly suggest somebody to the council and write a memo, and then the council can also adopt it as a resolution.
Alright, so let me, here's the memo.
If I may, if I may, so again, like I said, if there is a memo and then the council also adopts it by resolution, that memo really doesn't mean much of anything. That all being said, the reason why things are brought up in advance is to make sure that we're not just going on the word of one man as to what the law is and what the law isn't, and it's properly researched and addressed in advance. I mean, I'm looking at the Bellevue Municipal Code, which does allow the mayor, by the way, to appoint a certain number of members without the council, by the way, according to the law. There's also, there's also something, I'm looking at Bellevue's website, that seems to be a little bit different.
The mayor controls it, he controls that website and puts the information that he chooses on.
Of course, the website is not the law, but again, there's some language in the website which may suggest that there are additional resolutions, ordinances that may have been passed, that may have actually changed the situation. That all being said, this is why these are issues that are usually brought up in advance of a meeting and not after a meeting is called to order. So at this point, whether or not these concerns are valid or not unvalid concerns, it's hard to tell, because they weren't brought to the attention, it doesn't seem, at least not to my knowledge, it was not brought to the attention of either the planning board attorney or the town attorney or the manager, which is also the township manager, which would be responsible for making sure that the town is run as per the ordinances. Unless you tell me this was brought up in advance of today, was this brought up in advance of today with anybody else?
Oh, my, no, it wasn't.
Alright, and so if there's, and if given some time, I could answer your question a little bit better.
Do we suspend this meeting, is my question? Why the labor, the labor is something that, you know, do we suspend it? We don't have a majority at this point to even vote or validate anything?
Of course, if allowed a little bit more time to just do a little bit more research, unless everybody's in a rush to get out of here as fast as possible, if allowed to do a little bit more research, I will, I think that would be a good suggestion.
So if I made for the chair?
What's that?
If I made for the chair? Because now, we have a really healthy conversation, and Andy, I respect, I know Andy knows since we wrestled, and totally respect him. But like you said, what was the reasoning not giving it to council first? Before coming forward, and like, I used the word allegations as, as, as... Why would we do that now here, without going in front of legal first? And then now the allegations, good, right, wrong, or indifferent, once it goes to the DCA and it comes back refined? Right? So what was the reasoning to announce it that way?
I'm gonna tell you.
Of your opinion?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, it happened the way, basically, I said it happened, I was up to two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, but what was the reasoning of it? So why wouldn't you deliver it to the council?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, listen, there's a lot of inappropriate things done here. The town manager coming here and basically telling me that if I don't vote on the bills, that it's my responsibility, and he's shutting, the town will shut down because they're not gonna pay Tom, and they're not gonna pay anybody. They were so out of line when they approached us like that, it wasn't even funny.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the bills also.
Agreed, but so again, that's the thing, that's the...
So that's why, that's when you start looking at this, and I work all day, so I don't sit home and do this. And I was literally up to two in the morning, and I gathered some of these documents, and I understand council, I do, I really do. You speak illegally, and you're right. But also, upon review of the ordinances as they are, the seventy-eight ordinance, the nineteen that dish one that he takes out of establishment and claims, listen, here's Mr. Zinkari, this is your thing, here's mine, voted on by the council. Michael, as a councilman in two thousand and three, affirmed that.
But I'm not asking that question.
Well, I did, because I'm not an attorney, I put this together, and this is my best place to present it to the public. Not to Michael, who's gonna throw me off the board, and up to his attorney, who I really don't trust, the town attorney, I don't like the way he does it.
But I'm not even saying it, I'm not even saying it that way. My question is, why wouldn't you go to, so like you said, what is the ramifications of not doing business? So meaning, moving forward. The attorney would have came here today, right, or in the next meeting, fully loaded, and had all the good questions.
I'm gonna tell you what, very honestly, I don't agree with what's being proposed tonight, that we make that thing on Main Street, being an area of redevelopment, and the board is stacked.
You shouldn't discuss the case until it's been ruled.
Alright, so that's what I'm saying.
I'll say publicly, I oppose it, I think that the developer has a five-year deal. The devil's in the details, we never get to hear it.
Brian, this is...
No, I don't know anything about that, but whether we, if we shut it down completely, we shut down any prospect of the property being cleaned up or anything. It has nothing to do with redevelopment, it has nothing to do with them having a deal with the council. We can't do anything if you wanna shut it down, which means...
It won't be shut down for good. It was, it was the town manager, just a few weeks ago, who threatened to shut this all down if we didn't vote on the bills. So now you wanna come to me and say, I'm looking to shut down, I'm looking to petition. Well, I think, the only difference is...
Which is why I left, you remember.
Hey, listen, that may be true, we'll find out if the state thinks it's stupid. I'm a pretty simple fella, I don't know the ordinance, everything is here.
No, I don't think any of that's stupid, but I think we still let them do their thing.
I'm also, not too sure, I'm sorry. Training is very valuable in this board. I don't know how many, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong, Andy, but training is very invaluable. And if everybody was trained and continues to go to training, as we should, which I'll be the first one to say, I've been gone in a couple of years, because I just can't afford to go to Atlantic City and pay the conference fees. I mean, but I went to many, many trains, and somewhere we get lost when we're not trained properly. So the if and when and why this was done this evening, I can understand why it wasn't done before. Doesn't make it right, doesn't make it wrong, but...
I wanted to make it public. They run their town outside the law sometime, I wanted to make it public. That's why so many people are here, because they knew this was gonna be made public. You asked me that question.
Yes, I did, I did.
You really did, Patty said, why are there so many people here tonight? There's a small matter in front of us, I didn't respond, because some of the folks here know. They've been knowing for two years, we haven't been listening. They got up and complained about Ms. Wallen's appointment, and we didn't do anything about it. She was placed on this board at one point illegally. She was a town employee, and she wasn't placed here, we all stayed quiet, I don't know.
Why, why did we, including yourselves?
I'm not an attorney.
Well, this is what my goal was all back to, that our planning board attorney has failed this call.
No, I'll give you a good reason why, because she was trying to find out from Michael how to resolve it. Because she didn't wanna embarrass him and say, yeah, Mr. Mayor, by the way, you put this woman on illegally.
That didn't serve this board, it didn't serve this community.
Well, that's why I'm doing what I'm doing tonight.
Well, I think this board should be aware of it.
And that's why it's gonna supersede all the folks in this town, I wasn't giving anybody a heads up, to come and try to take me out, this is going to the state, I don't care if we vote tonight, we can vote, we're gonna vote, take my part. I will put down that plan because I disagree with it, and everybody, like I always say, one man vote, one vote.
No, no vote, of course, respectful.
That's it, I don't care if we vote tonight, it's a legitimate vote.
But the board this field itself, Andy, if our attorney was there and was able to stop this, we pay them good money, our tax dollars pay them good money.
Well, I tell you why she did what she did with Ms. Wallen. It was so the mayor, well, listen...
But if we were, but if we stuck as board, as the members, and had more of a fine, and all the lack of that...
Did you know she was illegal?
No.
Okay, well, you didn't know. I knew there was a question, because I heard the people speak.
But if our attorney should have notified the board, there could be a problem here. This all stems from the attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can say that, you can say that, I don't...
I think, moving forward...
We took this all serious, at least I did.
We're gonna take a short recess, we put our council, I feel, in an unfair position. We kinda threw them into the tiger cage here. And we're gonna take a short ten-minute break to try to come up with some guidance and see how we're gonna move forward. So let's just take a short break, please. Beating back to order, and after some discussion with our council, he's gonna make a brief statement. But in his defense, you know, he was thrown into this last minute, he's not aware of all the details, so he's just gonna make a statement in order to base our decision on what he says.
So a valid question of the law was brought up by one of the board members tonight. Making any legal decisions, or making any decisions for that matter, without fully fleshing out the concerns that were brought up by the board member, would be irresponsible at this point. Any legal point that is brought up should be well-developed, it should be something that all sides have had a chance to research and discuss. So at this point, it's my belief that no more action should be taken until both sides have the ability. And at this point, I think there's, the question is whether or not the mayor has the power to make appointments, so on and so forth. Well, the mayor is not here to respond. And the mayor's office and the town's legal office would be the ones to respond to this, not the planning attorney.
And here, please.
It would be the mayor's legal department and the town's legal department that would respond to this allegation. And at this point, they're not here to respond. And there may be validity to the mayor's action, or there may not be, but the mayor would have to be the person to respond to this allegation. So I think at this point, the pruding force of action is to not continue until such time that all sides have had the ability to state their case.
So do you need a motion for adjournment?
Well, based, no, first, based on our council's advice, we're not attorneys up here, we try to do the best we can. Based on his advice, I think that what we're gonna do, adjourn the meeting.
Point of order, can citizens have some input here, Karen?
You mentioned it already, it's not a meeting anymore.
I mean, you mentioned earlier that the citizen, this is a...
Not at this point.
This is a very important matter.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, legal counsel look into it.
Some, wait a minute, some of us already looked into it, we've hired council and gave it to this planning board. Now, we brought, this is not something that all of a sudden came up. When Ms. Wallen was appointed, it was illegal. I and others stood in this very room before you and told you. We went to the council and told you it was illegal and all that.
We're not attorneys, Mr. Frank Tantoni, and...
Wait a minute, you have an attorney, Mr. Beto, who kept denying us. You forced we, the taxpayers, to hire and pay out of our pockets, Mr. Michael Cates, one of the biggest redevelopment attorneys in the law, and we got his legal opinion, citing all the chapters and all, gave it to Mr. Beto at a public meeting, and I sent it to her through the mail and all that. So this is not something that all of a sudden, oh my God, we told you. Another thing, Mr. Cates told us, all those approvals that were done, if any of those developers had brought you up, they'd win the case like that. They'd have it overturned because of illegal appointments.
That's why we're gonna have legal counsel look into this, and hopefully we can have this resolved in the next thirty days, so we can move forward with our board.
I just have one statement, it's important to what you're saying here. I'm not gonna go through the whole list that I made. But for me to hear, sit here today and hear that this was never brought up is false. I've been bringing this up...
I remember you brought it up, Mr. Trump.
Since one nineteen, I brought it up three, four times, on record, citing the ordinances, and nothing was done. And finally, somebody heard me today. So it was done four times maybe, and only a couple of months ago, I challenged it again, and the mayor's words is my appointment, in public, all of this is on record. And I'm sure the proper agency is, I can get this.
Like I said, we're not attorneys, we're gonna hope this gets hashed out. I feel our board is one of integrity, and that's the way we wanna keep it. So moving forward, we wanna have, the attorneys hash this out, and I think that's the best thing we can do.
Well, I'd ask you to tell Mr. Beto, should you refer to Mr. Cates' letter, that it's all legal, he cites everything in there.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Tantoni, with that being stated, we had...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry for the interruption. I'm Dean Donatello, that's our redevelopment council.
Yes.
I represent the town, I represent redevelopment work for the town, as you know.
Yes.
The only thing I would ask is if you're not going to take any action, would you please carry the notice?
That's what I was just gonna do. Everything on our agenda, we have PB two thousand thirteen is seven oh five, seven fifty-seven, Main Street. And we had two adjournments, PB twenty-one eighteen, five twenty-four, Union Avenue. And we also had Part Two, PB two thousand eleven, two twenty-nine, Main Street. All of three of these items would be carried forward to the next regularly scheduled meeting without further notice, so no notices have to be sent out. And hopefully, we can have this hashed out in time for next month, then we can hear these applications that were supposed to be heard tonight.
Yes, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
The meeting's adjourned.